Good evening, everybody. It is six thirty on August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five. We're calling to order the regularly scheduled school board meeting. Let's have them get situated. I'd like to invite you to stand if you're willing and able for the pledge of allegiance. Which brings us to agenda item three this evening, which is the standing approval items. Three point one tonight is the acceptance of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Seen none. The agenda is accepted as presented. Item three point two tonight is approval of the minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the listed minutes. Trustee Wiki.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the following minutes. The two thousand and twenty five July tenth regular meeting minutes and the two thousand and twenty five July tenth special meeting minutes for financing facilities.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Alexander. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? Seen none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. You see listed on the agenda this evening is item three point three donations. Seen none listed. We will carry on to item four proclamations. Seen none listed. We will move on to item number five this evening, which is public comments. If you would like to make a public comment, a person may address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item by completing a note card located inside the boardroom and place that card in the basket prior to the citizen public comment period. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you need more time, you are offered a second opportunity to address the board at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes. Please address the board as a whole, not individually. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We are paying attention to your comments and we appreciate them. However, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting. Questions that arise from public comment shall be referred to the superintendent or his designated for review, study, and future response. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. Seen no cards. Anybody from the audience wish to address the board at this time? Seen none. Moving on to agenda item number six. Six point one. Six is recognition presentations and reports. Item six point one is diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'll turn this over to Ms. Ashley Phillips.
And I have a quick request. Am I able to swap with the students really quickly for six point one, six point two? Computer is doing updates right now, so I have to swap technology.
Well, Lonnie says yes.
Okay, let's start it off with whatever we have this time around. Obviously, yep, we are coming back to school in the first few days and freshman orientation will be tomorrow. We are going to be sending thank yous out to the volunteers that we had for this information. Scheduled pickup has been this week. Make up day is the eighteenth at nine AM to eleven AM, and then school starts the twenty fifth within a break around, I think, the twenty ninth, luckily my birthday, so I'll take it. Honestly, very grateful. And then the twenty eighth will be family welcome back night, and then the commons by the football field at four thirty to six forty five PM. And picture day will be September fourth. Curriculum night will be six to ten PM, and then our first lay start will be September tenth.
Oh, sorry. And then a little bit more about family welcome night. You can meet with the principals and PTA as well as ask questions about support that families might need from the community. And there'll be karate and yoga for the younger kids, and the ROPD in the fire department will also be there. Your book information and sales. Right now, if you buy it before the twenty second of August, you can get it at a cheaper price, and as year goes on, it gets progressively more expensive. I think that's all we have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody have questions? Trustee Van Heidsma.
We were just talking a little bit before the meeting. Might I talk a little bit about the Raven Rally?
So the Raven Rally is where all the clubs come and some organizations around the school, and they all come to present a little bit about what they do to the student body as a whole. And parents are welcome for that, too. September thirteenth, I believe.
And then speaking of joining clubs, there are now permission slips that you will have to sign up at. It's on the weekly newsletter that I do recommend reading. It's very good to read every week that is sent out by Mr. Loomis, for the high school at least. And so there is a permission slip to join those forums, to join the clubs, and so that's, yeah, that's the important thing that I wanted to add.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? No. Moving back to six point one.
Okay, there we go. Good evening. It's always fun when technology works for you. So, um, welcome back to everyone. We have a few quick updates, and I know that we have a lot of new families that may be tuned in, so I'm going to give some save the dates as well and a little information. So we'll start off with our end of the year trails visit, the Royal Oak Juneteenth wrap-up, our IFLC annual impact meeting, which is next week, new teacher orientation day, day one, family welcome back night, which I know we'll hear a lot about tonight, and pack meeting reminder, save the date for our second annual Jedi educator summit and continual commitment. So it was the last day of school, and fortunately, my daughter's last day of school for her was a little earlier, so I was able to bring her over to Trails with me. And if you're new or have not heard of our Trails program, it's for ages eighteen through twenty six, and it literally stands for transitioning responsible adults in life skills. I know that we've seen videos of the Trails students doing some of their work sites and outside jobs and different trips that they've done, but it was so cool to pop in on their last day of school to do social stories with music with their teach, one of their two lead teachers, Mr. Dominic Askin. So my daughter plays cello along with me, so we both brought our cellos over and our keyboard from home and had a blast. We were able to hear about the students' music stories, and all of them were able to rotate to all three different instruments. So if you have not heard about our Trails program, please check out the website. It's one of the coolest things around. Next up is our wrap-up from our two thousand and twenty five Royal Oak Juneteenth celebration, which was held at Centennial Commons and the Royal Oak Farmers Market. It was an amazing event, great weather as well, and believe it or not, we are already starting to plan, well, we started planning the next day for the two thousand and twenty six Royal Oak Juneteenth. So thank you to all who came out. Next up, we have our Interfaith Leadership Council Annual Impact Meeting, which is going to be on the nineteenth. I blew up a nice big QR code and a shortened link just in case anybody wants to scan it because it is open to the public. So we heard from IFLC when our students from ROMS presented about religious diversity journeys back in the spring. We are meeting again just to talk about the impact, and I will be speaking there, just talking about our journey with Journeys, the new name for it. And we'll hear from some of the ROMS students as well and Grissom Middle School. So please come out. August nineteenth is in Livonia from four to six PM. Next up, I know you all will hear a lot about new teacher orientation. Tonight as well, I was able to present to them during day one. We did a name stories activity. They got to meet me, the DEI coordinator, find out about DEI in action in Royal Oak Schools and just some of the different things that we've done for our late starts and different PDs from two thousand and twenty three to two thousand and twenty five, my time here. We talked about building their own inclusive learning environments, whether they were a classroom teacher, social worker, or anything in between. And last but not least, the focus on them, how to prevent burnout. So when I told them, if you are sick, you probably should take a sick day, and I said, Ashley Phillips says it's okay, because we know that we cannot pour for an empty cup. So we had a blast, and we were able to end our half of the day before lunch with a tour around the district, seeing the different parks and the different schools and our facilities, and we ended at Ray's Ice Cream, where the owner, Jason, came out and took a nice pic with us and talked about the wonder of Royal Oak and everything great about what we have going on. So congratulations to all of our new staff members. Another thing that we'll hear a lot about this tonight will be the family welcome back night. I know that it is August twenty eighth. We will be at Royal Oak High School, and I want every family to come out new, or if you've been here with us for a while, there'll be lots of giveaways from community partners, and please stop by our DEI table as well to say hello. And that's four thirty to six forty five. For our newer families or families that may not know about our ROPAC group, it is a parent advocacy committee, and it's geared towards families with students with IEPs or file for plans or students or families that think their students may need special education services. Their first meeting is going to be here in the boardroom at six thirty to eight PM, and it's going to be September sixteenth. Each of their follow-up meetings will be here at the boardroom or virtual once the weather gets a little colder. Every third Tuesday of the month, same time, six thirty to eight PM. And a professional learning save the date. So last year, we had our inaugural Jedi Educator Summit hosted by the Oakland County Jedi Council, which I'm a part of, and we partner with Oakland University for this. We'll be holding this again Friday, November sixth, from eight to three thirty. It will be bigger and better, and it will be at Oakland School's main campus. So please save the date for that, and we will have more information for registration to come. And last but not least, I know it seems like I've been talking fast. I want to slow down for this one because it's very sincere. So during our last meeting together with me, I gave a general thank you and, of course, our farewells to Mary Beth. But I want to extend another thank you directly to our board and our cabinet for just the continual commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, especially saying that we have a dedicated position to make sure that things are coordinated throughout the district and that we are moving forward with all initiatives and just showing trunk. And I told our new teachers, you will see our board and our cabinet, as you see in the pictures. They saw lots of pictures of you all yesterday. You will see them very active in the community, at our school events, and everything else. We have an amazing team. So thank you all for keeping that commitment going. And if there are any questions.
Trustee Jocinski.
Hey, not so much a question, but I was at a work event today where the Interfaith Leadership Council was council, right?
Yes, yes.
Is that the right term? They were presenting and they, you know, were making the rounds, and I said, like, oh, no, I'm really familiar with your program, right? That I'm a board member here, and they were so thrilled and just had really, like, wonderful things to say about the district and you and our program, and that they were featuring the Royal Oak students' stories in this annual meeting in their video that they were putting together. And so I just thought that was very cool, and she was just was, you know, happy to make that connection. So made me very proud.
I will be a part of that video, so I'm super excited to see how it came out. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Moving to item six point three tonight, which is the Royal Oak Education Center redesign. And I will turn this over to Dr. Tofelski for his presentation.
Thank you, President Chahorsky, and to the rest of the school board. Do I, am I supposed to, like, get up and walk around? Do I stay here? What? What? You want me to just jump and point again? Vice, uh, Vice President Alexander, you missed me jumping and pointing at the top of the screen at our Thursday meeting. It was, it was a lot. I was better when I was younger. So I guess I can stay seated. I will probably need to get up at some point, but President Chahorsky, you are right. I don't think I can sit the whole time, but. So this is a presentation to talk about the future of the Royal Oak Education Center. And we'll talk a little bit more about what that all means, but this will be primarily focused on phase one programming for the Churchill Community High School Reimagination Project, the Trails Program, which Ms. Phillips mentioned, the Royal Oak Early Childhood Education Program, and the Royal Oak Early Childhood Special Education Program. And this plan for phase one is, is, is fall of two thousand and twenty six. So we wanted to start with the why, and so what are our current outcomes? Are we getting outcomes for our students at CCHS that set them up for success post-high school? And this is not an indictment on anything that is happening currently or what has happened. But this is an opportunity for us to reimagine what an alternative education can become. As we transition to twenty-first century learning in all of our buildings, I think that it is important to talk with our alternative high school staff, students, and administration as well, and see if they are still getting the outcomes that they need and that they like and that they want. I think that when we talk about redesigning our entire district and how we're doing things moving forward, we have to pay special attention to the students at Churchill High School and make sure that their needs are getting met as well. Sometimes we can say there's only sixty-six of them. They're off at a different campus, any of those things, and we don't want to do that. We want to make sure that they are a priority, just as our students at the comprehensive high school are as well. So I think one of the important things that we looked at was student-centered goals. So we have a very good graduation rate at Churchill High School. Last year, it was approximately eighty percent. Prior to that, it was seventy, in the seventies and the sixties, which for an alternative high school is extremely good. But when we started talking about what does the thirteenth year look like, and when I say thirteenth year, I mean, we have grade twelve, and then what does that next year, year thirteen, look like? We're sending, I think, we had a report from two years ago, the class of two thousand and twenty-four, or so it was, it was last year, where fourteen students from Churchill went to college. They enrolled in the post-secondary institution within six months of the time that they graduated, which is amazing. There were thirty-two students, though, out of that graduating class that we did not have any data on. So what did their thirteenth year look like? Can we make sure that they have some credentialing, some micro-credentialing, some experience in college? One of the things that we've had a lot of conversations about at Cabinet is if we send, send a student out into the world in their thirteenth year, and they've had some struggles in education, and they go to a community college, and they get lost on campus, and they get overwhelmed, and they spend a few thousand dollars, and they don't do particularly well. What is the likelihood that they're going to come back for another semester? And if they come back for another semester, what's the likelihood that they're going to come back the following year if they're not experiencing success? So while they are with us, can we walk them through what the registrar's office looks like, what it means to buy books? Do you even have to buy books? Is that necessary? How you navigate to campus? How you ensure you have some life admin skills to get to school and from school? What it looks like to plan out a virtual class? All of those things that I think a lot of us may have taken for granted. And again, we know that a lot of our students are graduating from Churchill High School. We know a lot of them want to go to a comprehensive community college or university, so how can we get them some experience while they're still here? So we also want to ensure that students experience dignity, esteem, and pride in their learning environments. We can't just put kids in a room and say, like, now learn. They have to be excited about being in that place. That place has to have meaning to them. That's how we get this idea of school pride, when you walk in and you hear, go Ravens, and you see all of the things that are happening there. We want kids to feel about, feel good about the spaces that they're in. The other challenge that we wanted to make sure is that we have comprehensive programming within the Royal Oak Education Center, and that would include early childhood education as well. So by leveraging the current facilities in the district, we can expand programming for our littlest learners, enhance the Churchill Community High School options, and better serve our Trails students, all within the unified educational campus. And as a, as a note, optimizing the use of district facilities and resources is a strategic plan goal. So when we look at this facility, we know that there is room to, room to grow here. So I'm going to talk just for, for a minute, and everybody can see the slide, but there's an author, David Thornburg, and he has a lot of thoughts about how learning should take place and what it can and should like, should look like. And he basically has three spaces that he says all schools should be designed after. And this is kind of our, what we're looking at for the redesign of Churchill. There should be a cave, which is a private space for reflection and transformation of knowledge into a belief. So we know that there needs to be a healthy balance of engagement in class, and then also retreat, where you have a moment to sit and reflect and think about what you did. A campfire, which would be a gathering space to learn from experts, so this would be your traditional classroom space. Some of the CTE and dual enrollment opportunities we'd like to provide our students. And what is, what does the culture of Churchill look like? Like, this is important. We have a strong culture at Churchill already, and how do you maintain that so kids know what to expect when they come in? I think sometimes when kids hear alternative high school, they may look at people from my generation and the Breakfast Club, and like, you know, that's not what alternative high school is these days. Alternative high school is very much, we're going to come in, we're going to do our work, we're going to, you know, make sure that we're, we're tending to our needs socially, emotionally, and academically. It's not, you know, kind of what it, what it may have been framed as in the seventies and eighties when I was growing up, so. And then finally, a watering hole, which is, would be just a space where kids can collaborate with each other, they can work with each other and talk to each other and relax and work on their dual enrollment classes or projects that they have within there. So there are some fundamental beliefs about the Churchill High School redesign that we would like to ensure that we have that we pay special attention to. One of them, I think, is, again, talking about that thirteenth year, and I think that's an accountability, an accountability measure for our schools. As an educational leader, I think that if we are not building them up, building our students up for momentum as they leave, we are doing them a disservice. If we are just dragging them to June eighth and dropping them off and saying, good luck, I don't think that we're doing our full job. And so we want to make sure that we remain responsible for student outcomes beyond graduation. We want to have required, and I'll talk about the asterisks in a second, required participation in post-secondaryary opportunities, college career, or micro-credentialing. Meaningful in-person experiences with our staff is a non-negotiable. Our staff is wonderful. We don't want to take that away. I think this is what differentiates, differentiates us from other alternative high schools in the area. And it may not be five, six hours a day, every day, sitting in the same space, doing education the way we've always done it. But I think that an in-person experience for all of our students is absolutely a non-negotiable. And truly individualized programming for each student. Again, when you have sixty-six kids, we should be able to go through and say, what are your beliefs? What do you want to do? What are your hopes? What are your dreams? And we should be able to accommodate that. When I say required, we do know that we have some students that come by with some academic challenges, and so we will have to work within that, those confines. If students come significantly credit deficient, they may have to be doing some work with online programming or other programming. And the online programming does not just have to be asynchronous programming where they're sitting and staring at a computer. Or it, uh, it can be synchronous programming where they're actually communicating with somebody on the other end. There are other groups that, that we are going to work with. One of them is a graduation alliance, which Oakland Schools has a partnership with, to make sure that there are people, mentors, working with these students to try to get them caught up. So when we say required, this is kind of like our tier-one intervention for our students that come over. I would like every student to engage in some sort of college or career coursework while they are still at Churchill High School. But if a student comes over and they struggled socially and emotionally and academically, and they have five credit hours, we know that we have to work individually with that student. And so the college and career may come at some point, but at some point, I think that it does need to come, but it just may not be every single year for every single student. But that is the goal, and I think that's the goal that we should be measured by. And again, I think when we talk about some of our kids, we've had the opportunity, and we have had buses that could take our Churchill students privately previously to O-Tech or to OCC or to some of these other areas. And so part of that is why weren't we able to, to use those opportunities with our students to ensure that they were, they had access to that programming? And so when we talk about this fundamental redesign, it is getting the message out that there is more to this than just the five or six hours here, no matter how meaningful they are. And again, I am not minimizing that. I'm not downplaying that. I am not saying that it was not truly an experience that our, our kids cherished. But I do think that as we look forward with sustainability of the program and declining enrollment, we do have to talk about how we can meet students' needs where they are at specifically. And I think that starts with individualized programming for each and every one of our students. Another part of the redesign of the Royal Oak Education Center is early childhood expansion. So we have a high demand right now for our current early childhood program. We have about a hundred seats, and we have a waiting list already. We know that if we expanded, we would be able to fill up. We have heard that over and over and over from our parents. This is also a very central location. If you're at Upton, if you're at Oakland, and we're, those are kind of our opposite ends of the district, this is like a pretty nice central meeting space. The other thing that is really great about this, I have heard that the parking lots at Adams, I have not experienced them yet in my first fall as a superintendent, but I've heard the parking lots at Adams can be challenging, to say the least. So this would remove some of our staff members from Adams. It would remove the students from Adams who are in the early childhood ed program. And our staff members and parents here would have the opportunity to have an expanded parking lot where they could park, they could drop their GSRP children off, they could get signed in and do all of those things in a much more isolated area so that they do not have to worry about fighting over the one parking spot that somebody from Adams is also trying to get into, so. And then our enhanced facilities, I think when we walk around here, we see wonderful opportunities, and we'll get to that in, in another slide. So we have just like this space, for example, the, the community, what do we call it? Sorry, not the media center. The Learning Commons. Thank you, Dr. Yannis. The Learning Commons, we have the gymnasium here. We have all of this land around us, like, what a great opportunity for our, our little learners to experience this. The early childhood special education program will also relocate here and creating this, just this, like, comprehensive early learning hub for all of our students with and without special needs. So I think it's, it's a really great opportunity. The Trails Program, which is housed here, and again, you heard a little bit about that from Ms. Phillips, transitioning responsible adults in life skills. We are looking to move the classrooms that those students are at. We would not be changing the program. We would not be fundamentally increasing or decreasing the size of it. Really, that program is experiencing a lot of success, and so that would just be moving to the other end of the building from where it's at now. They would still have easy access to parking lots. It would still be accessible for students. It would be all of the things that we have right now, just in, in a different location. Do we have any questions so far from the board? I know I talk fast. I know I move fast. I'm gonna stand up in a second. Yes, Ms. Van Heidsma.
I was gonna interrupt you, but you were on a roll, so. It was, in talking about Churchill, too, and you talked, I mean, everything that you said about the program makes such logical sense to me.
Yeah.
Is, is it the way those programs are typically run, and we just kind of not running it that way? Or, I mean, it's, again, it just seems like such a logical approach for, for that population of students?
So the individualized approach, you mean? I think a lot of them, I mean, I think a lot of them have a typical in-person education and then do offer some kind of career or college component. But I think this is, you know, I had somebody who emailed me and said that they were excited to be in Royal Oak, and they want to be the district that leads all districts. And I really, really like that tagline. I have to give it credit, and I will in my opening address to the staff. But I think that this is one of those things where we take a bold stroke and we say, this is, this is where we value our children. Even our, even the children at our alternative high school, where we want to focus on dual enrollment. And we know that if you want to go into something, high school diploma is going to be a barrier, so we're going to get that. But then if you have experience in that area, how much better is that? And honestly, and again, this is not an indictment on anything we've done thus far. I think when other programs look at becoming individualized and customized, they were, the way we are looking at doing it, it's really hard for the adults to do that. There are a lot of things that we have to do. But sometimes what's best for kids is difficult for adults, and that means that it's the right thing to do, and we just have to give our adults a little bit more support, and how can we do that? How can we have systems in place? How can we have systems in place where we know we're sending X number of kids to OSTC? We have partnerships at OCC and some of the other programming. Um, and so that is incumbent on us to say, "What systems can we put in place so that as the, the people are there, they have the ability to say, 'These are some programs that you might be interested in'?" So, um, and again, you have to have that in-person component as well, and I think that's always difficult to say like, "Well, what kind of certification do we need? And how are we gonna do this? And how are we gonna manage it? And we have to have the right personality and all those things." So I think the, the short answer is it's really hard, but I think the long, the longer answer is what I just said. I think it's really worth it too, though, and I think that's, that's one of the things about this that I'm most excited about. It's like, this can be a model for what other districts can do to serve their students who um, just don't want to be at the comprehensive high school. It's just, it's different, so. Um, other questions? I don't have to jump, cuz I have a, a little laser pointer. So up there in the upper left-hand corner, um, is the redesigned space. I ca- I mean, I can go, I'm ready to, you just let me know. Um, so up there, this was, this was what it started out as. And so this was the brainstorm phase. On the next slide, we'll show you what um, Phase One is actually going to look like. But we really tried to consider the unique needs of each program while maximizing some shared spaces so that we don't have to replicate a bunch of things. Because again, if you're gonna try and run three programs and an administrative center in one building and you try to have three cafeterias and three offices and three sets of adult bathrooms and this and this and this, like, you just run out of space, you run out of money, and you run out of uh, patience of our architects frankly, so, who have been wonderful along the way. So we will have stakeholder input in this, I think stakeholder input is extremely imperative. Um, as we go along the way, we just have to kind of have a framework to work within and what is feasible and what is not. So the Phase One implementation, um, this upper left-hand corner, those three rooms, and then the pink there would be the um, the Churchill Community High School Alternative School, uh, Alternative Program. The purple would be Trails. And then the re- the green down at the bottom would be um, the ECC Program. And again, that would house GSRP, tuition-based, early childhood special education, um, all in that program. And then we'd have a little play area over there. This is Phase One, um, and we'll look a little bit at what the, the design of at least Churchill's going to look like moving forward. Because in Phase One, the Early Childhood Education Program will look very similar to the way the building looks right now, except everything will be smaller. We need smaller furniture for little kids, that's, I've learned that in my years of education, so. Um, so again, and with the, the space and the land that I mentioned, this does give us space to, for future expansion of um, frankly, both programs if we needed to. Like, I would love nothing more than to come to you guys in a year and say like, "I made a mistake, we have ninety kids that wanna get in Churchill, we need more space." And so um, I don't think that that would be a problem, we can, you know, we, we do, we definitely do have space here. And again, when you talk about programs working together and shared resources, um, I think that this accomplishes that. Any questions on, on the initial piece? Yes, Ms. Anderson?
So if it expands, what would happen to the administrative part of it? What are your thoughts?
So we can be bounced anywhere. Um, we're, we're very mobile, um, and I think that Trails could move down a little bit and you could look at just moving different areas down. So right now, um, that, this space right here, uh, help me, Dr. Yannis, it's like curriculum and special education. And so like, if we needed to do that, we could move. Um, you know, but we are looking at, if we were to do some kind of building expansion, this area over here is pretty open. So we may be able to accomplish all of those things in an expansion if we need to expand. So it, it could theoretically be new building. I mean, I think when you look at the work that we do as administrators, it's extremely important. It's often behind the scenes and nobody wants to say like, "We are going to build a new building for administration." I don't, that is not a popular tagline in any bond campaign. And so like, you guys can just kinda shove us, like, we may end up in the basement of Don Darrow instead of the files if that's what it becomes, which is... Yeah, yeah, so it, tha- that does, that does come into play in a minute. I'll, I, I won't steal my thunder here, but... Yes, sure, Vice President Alexander.
Um, I'm curious as to what the um, reuse of the space for the current um, early childhood center at Adams looks like in this design.
Yes, so the Adams space, we have, um, part of that, the Trails Program is gonna displace TAC. And so TAC is going to take some of that space over there, which again, will be nice. I think it's nice when technology is closest to the people. And so like, they can be not only in a building that is not our building, but they can be in an elementary school, they can kind of be, you know, also centrally located. So they're gonna take, um, and Dr. Yannis jumping in anytime, I think they're gonna take the Gross Motorspace currently. And we have specials on carts right now, so some of those specials would then get their own classroom. Some of the space can be returned to what it was, like, we have a classroom and a music room, or a, an early childhood classroom as a music room, so the music teacher could return to the music room, which would be wonderful. And like, in um, my brain, a few years from now, I see like, this, just a bustling early childhood space and just a wonderful uh, Churchill and Trails Program. And we need to actually open up an additional section of K-five programming, and we would then have that space at Adams. And so that's far down the road, but like, that, I, I think it, this is definitely a field of dream situation. If we build it, they will come. I think if you say we can house four hundred ch- children for early childhood education, we'll get them. So um, you have to start somewhere, right? Like, we have two boxes right now, um, down at the end of the hallway that are going to be the future for um, Churchill Community High School. And so this was the inspiration. We do not want it to look like traditional classrooms or institutional or instructional spaces. We want it to be meeting spaces with classrooms in them. Um, we want the spaces to be inspired by Thornburg's learning archetypes for collaboration and community. I want cool things, like, that's a live, that's a living wall right there. I like the soft lighting sconces, I like the, the focus of this wall that has like kind of a tile background. In-person education remains a non-negotiable element of the program. And so I want kids to walk in, we want kids to walk in and see these spaces as like, a place that I can learn, a place that I can think, a place that I can have fun. Um, you know, we also know that currently they get um, lunches in Churchill, we would like to maintain that. But I um, have been talking with Ms. Bella and with our food service um, company about how we can deliver that a little bit differently. Like, ki- can kids go to those fancy vending machines and badge in and get something? And they can take a salad whenever they need it, they can take a sandwich. It would be a little bit different than like, you know, again, I know, I know this is hyperbolic, but like, you know, getting a brown paper bag thrown at them as they're walking out the door, so. So how can we, how can we design that a little bit differently where they can go up, they can swipe, they can get a wonderful fresh salad, um, and then they can take it back and they can enjoy it while they're doing their work for their classes? So um, that would be something that I would, we would really like to see here. So again, frequently asked questions, can CCHS and Trails still access the areas that will be the EC, uh, the Early Childhood Education Space? Yes, and so under adult supervision, all spaces are open to all programs. And so they can come down here, they can use this space, they can get to the gym, they can go to their Learning Commons. There are no spaces where we are saying like, we are segregating students from each other. This building is still open for education for all of our students, and we think that that's important. There are some rules and regulations for GSRP and early childhood education and who can access, but all of our teachers would actually, would obviously be um, certified, qualified, and able to uh, work with our students here. Another FAQ that I would anticipate, how can we fund this during budget constraints? And so um, we've talked a lot about um, how we came out of this year a little bit better um, than we had anticipated. And so that was really, really a positive. But this project will be funded through sinking fund, um, which is limited to construction, building improvements, and specific technology. I think one of the things that the community has to understand is um, how uh, what good stewards the school board has been over the, the last handful of years and even going beyond that with taxpayer dollars. Keeping up with schools, making sure that roofs, boilers, and parking lots have been replaced on a regular schedule so that money is in the um, sinking fund to do some of this. And we're not freaking out that we might need a new boiler in two years and so we can't do anything and we're gonna save it. So this is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for the community. Yes, Ms. Van Heidsma?
Um, I had a question, so it says, instruction, building improvements, and specific technology? Does that include furniture? Cuz furniture is a little bit...
You cannot buy furniture...
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
But we, we do have early childhood furniture already.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The specific, specific technology is it has to be instructional technology. So it has to be used by the teachers and the principals, it can't be administrative technology.
Can't, I don't think it can be infrastructure either, right? Yeah. Um, so I think that this is one of those things where you look at the um, the five-year plan and things that, that we do as an administration and as a school board. And we have to tip our cap to, to what the school board has done to make sure that we have this money. Um, the taxpayers were gracious enough to fund it um, through an election. And like, it has been used, every dollar has been used appropriately so that we have excellent facilities that are well-maintained, but then we can also do these enhancements. Um, so who's been involved in the planning? Churchill Administration has provided some initial input, but moving forward, we will absolutely need Churchill Community High School staff and stakeholder feedback. We can't go forward with this. We are going to be, you know, fit into that space that, that we have set out um, in the, in the uh, in, within this building. But aside from that, I think the design of the program, it's imperative that we have stakeholder and student and parent feedback in it. The teachers, um, the mental health specialists, the administration that work with students on a daily basis, I think they need voice. Now, we know voice does not always mean a vote, so if the kids are like, "We want ten sixty-inch TVs in there", like, and they're all like, "This we demand", we may not do that. But we wanna hear voice from the students and hear what is important to them and what they feel they need in their learning spaces, cuz this is ultimately what that's about. Blessings in a Backpack, can I cover this one? And then we'll get to you, Trustee Van Heidsma. Go ahead.
Um, I was gonna ask too, as a result of this, and it, so once people are aware that we're having this program and, you know, in the space, uh, is there any challenges with staffing in that space? Cuz if, if we have a growth, right, within early childhood and the challenges with staff period and education?
Yeah.
Do we anticipate any challenges?
I don't think so. I mean, again, the in-person classes, because we wanna be flexible with the students and the learning environment. I think the in-person classes would probably lean towards certification agnostic. So you talk about um, the financial literacy class that all students have to take before they graduate from high school. That, you do not necessarily need to be a business education teacher or a math teacher, you can be anything. Um, in previous roles, we were looking at an ELA teacher because we were like, if every kid has to see one teacher in this building, it should be that guy. Um, and it did not end up working out cuz he knew nothing about personal finance. But aside from that, I thought it was a wonderful plan. And so we went a more traditional route. But things like that, I think it's, it's more about attitude than specific certification. So I do not think we'll have difficulty staffing this program. So Blessings in a Backpack and Existing Resources, um, we've met with the Royal Oak Blessings in a Backpack leadership. I talked to Shelley last week. Um, we have new space for her. She was extremely excited about the new space cuz the new space is air-conditioned and it is quiet. And so she was like, "Can we listen to music?" I said, "Shelley, we will buy a Bluetooth speaker for you, buddy." So she is very excited about it. So um, and then the, the stuff, as I, we, we lovingly call it, in those two, those two classrooms now will be moved to um, the middle school basement aforementioned. They will be on storage racks, it will be locked, if it needs to be locked, we'll follow all of the processes and procedures that we need to follow. And then technology services will, uh, services will relocate to Adams. So costs and next step, um, the estimated project cost is going to be approximately two million dollars. We think it can come in a shade under that, but we wanna make sure that everybody has what they need in those spaces. So if we over-improve them, um, as some may think, like, I don't think that's a big deal. I wanna make sure that the space is heated and cooled and it's not too cold in the winter and too hot in the summer and all of those things. I think that the space should have um, really nice furniture and the space should have all of these things that make it um, a, a, an environment where kids wanna walk in every day and say like, "I am excited to be here and I'm proud to, to, to go to Churchill Community High School." We have about five point one million dollars in available funding um, in our sinking fund. And again, that is right now, whatever we spend this year, so if we only spent this two million, at the end of this year, we would have three point one million, correct, uh, Ms. Bella? Is my math right on that? Okay, yep, that checks out. Um, come next July, come next July, we would collect another three point four million from the taxpayers. And so w- we would then be back up to six point five million. So the nice thing about a sinking fund is it renew, we, we, we get the collections every single year. So um, implementation timeline, um, with approval tonight, uh, we'll begin the detailed planning process with TMP Architecture. We'll engage Barton Mallow as a construction manager for the project. Um, develop some specific program requirements of stakeholder input. Uh, finalize construction documents and bidding and complete construction for fall of twenty twenty-six. And fall opening of twenty twenty-six means Churchill Community High School, it means the Trails Program, and it means the Early Childhood Education Center. So this building fundamentally known as the Royal Oak Education Center, is that what we, is that what we? And then we had, there was a long debate today, I had to bring uh, my attorney, AKA my wife, into it. Is it the Royal Oak Education Center or the Royal Oak Educational Center? We went, we, we ended up on Education Center, yeah. What's that? She was right, the lawyer was right, yeah. I, I thought the Derek Zoolander School for Kids Who Need to Read Good would be one, but, but that was, she said that I shouldn't say that joke at the meeting, so. So, sorry. Was she, wait, was she right about that too? So um, architectural and construction partners are on board, they're excited about this project. They are, they like the idea of this too because it's something different, it's something they haven't done before. Again, when we talk about alternative high school spaces, most of the time, it's like, where can we put kids quickly? And now we're like, we wanna be thoughtful about this, we want their input, we wanna see what their learning's going to look like, so.
Where would the funding for the furniture come from for church, the...
So we do have a lot of furniture here, but that, the rest of the ra- remainder of the furniture would be a general fund purchase unless there were grand dollars out there. Like theoretically, because it would be for an alternative high school, you may be able to use thirty-one A materials, but that's, that's a little bit iffy, so. So that would be general fund, but again, we do have a lot of furniture, um, especially like, you know, tables and desks and some of the soft seating. But like, in some of those other areas where we would like pods for the kids and things like that, like that would just have to be things that we buy. Trustee Juzinski?
Um, actually a question for Kathy then. Uh, uh, as we talk about uses of sinking fund, it, is, is the two million dollars all in, including the architecture services and Barton Mallow and everything, all of that is included?
Yes, that, that is our estimate for, including all, all in.
I have a question, we own that building at Cotelpa in Maine, that O-Tech building. Has there ever been any, or what is the thought of potential future uses of that?
You just let Dr. Tofelski know about a new building. Um, it's where grounds keeps uh, the lawn equipment and the plows for the winter and things like that. It is the old Volk Ed Auto Building, so there's, you know, lifts in there for cars and things like that. So we have, right by, yeah, right behind Brad.
Is there office space in there?
I, I have to admit, I, in fourteen years, I have, I have a key, but I have not been in the building.
Looks a little terrifying.
Maybe a field trip.
I don't blame you.
President Chorworski, I see three point one million dollars in available funding and a lunch meeting between you and I tomorrow at Brad Bykerspelli's.
I'm sorry, have we thought much about the kind of communication, communication plan we might put together to, to present this to the community? You talked to um, just some friends about different things and this, one person said, you know, "We could maybe improve, as, as a complete district, improve our branding somehow."
Yeah.
You know, and, and that's not something I think that, you know, that usually requires professionals and you probably have to pay them to do their professional things. But I'm just, this might be a way to start considering that as a district about how we, how we present the district to the community. And it, it, this is really just off the top of my head, I don't really have any, other than just very general thoughts on it. I will say further though, I think the city of Royal Oak, who has more money to do that kind of thing, does a good job of branding, right? Everybody understands that, that when you see signage or whatever, you understand that it's a, you know, it creates a, a mental model about what the city is and, and services that they offer and that kind of things. And maybe the district should be thinking about that. Again, that's sort of, just sort of tangential to this, but it, it sort of comes up to me, that this is something we would wanna communicate to the community and I wonder how we would do that, or how we would pay for it.
Yeah, so I think um, I, I think that it's really important to communicate this. I think a lot of times, again, as we've taught, as we talk about alternative high school programming, like, how aware of this programming is our community? Um, I think it gets to what is the level of knowledge at our high school for our students? Um, do our, do our kids know about this? But then um, when we talk about community branding, I do think it's important to, to kind of change the way that we have been communicating with the community a little bit. We talked about that um, briefly, relying maybe a little bit less on traditional newspapers that we can feel and read and relying a little bit more on targeted ed... and relying a little bit more on targeted advertising through social media websites and things like that. So, um, I do know, just speaking from personal experience, like I had been to a handful of things, but it was like on Facebook that I was everywhere. Um, and it, it was kind of funny. I was like chuckling myself, I'm like, yes, I have been everywhere. And then like, you know, kind of laughing like I got away with something. But, but I think that to see how quickly things spread on social media, leveraging creative ways to do that, I think is really, really important. Um, so that we can communicate that to the community and also to prospective students. But then again, I think that, that, the branding idea goes to, if we have a space that kids can feel good about coming to every single day and we can brand that as a safe, caring and warm environment, then I think that, that, that will be something that will only enhance the, the project and, and what's happening here. So, um, I can work with Ms. Murphy on that as well to see what, what she's thinking.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, we are introducing or reimagining what everybody thinks of as Churchill, just Churchill, as the Royal Oak Educational, Education Center.
Yeah.
Which still houses Churchill Alternative High School and the EEC and the Trails Program, you know? So it's, it's sort of like a brand new place that is still just part of the place that's always been here, but reimagined.
Yeah, I think it would be great to, uh, hopefully sooner rather than later, you know, in the summer, as they're, they're designing that space, they can finish that space. And we can have open houses and have people coming through, because I really do think if you get people into that space, they're going to look around. You know, if we have a, you know, again, some unique furniture, some carpet down, like if it does not look like an institutional classroom that has brick walls, like I think people will be impressed by the space and, and that's when you start to get people talking about it too.
I agree with that, but I also think the early childhood aspect, um, is going to be really welcomed in this community and I think there's a huge need. So I think we need to extend the marketing and that camp, like the knowledge campaign to that as well.
Yeah, yeah, I think some of that, um, will take care of itself, but again, when we start to expand this programming, like I think that would, that will be something where we say, Royal Oak is a wonderful place when you're young, when you're starting a family, when you have a family, and then as you're watching your family go off to college. I think, you know, that it's, it's just like, we're going to be able to hit all of those aspects of, um, you know, of, of your life, so.
I have one other question. Bullet point three, uh, talks about getting stakeholder input. Is that something that we would have a partner help us with, or is that something that just you lucky people in, in the administration get to do, or?
Yeah, so we can. Um, I, I think it kind of depends on, um, how the stakeholder input is received. Like if this is something, when we walk into a room and people are like, we've been dying to tell you what we think about this, then I think that that can be something that we can do, or we can work with Oakland Intermediate School District. But I think if it's something that we have to pull out of people, um, we wouldn't want it to look like we have our thumb on the scales and we're saying like, this is the direction you should go in. Um, and so I think that would be a case where we would kind of have to maybe look outside. But, but I, I'm hoping that, um, Ms. Powell and, and the staff are going to, to, um, engage in this process initially and then talk to the students and then from there, how can we get ahold of parents and then other, you know, even prospective parents who say, my kid has struggled in a comprehensive high school, but here's what I'd like to see, um, here's what I'd like to see it look like, so. Trustee Van Heysma.
And, and, you know, I know we're, we're just hearing this, you know, on today, this vision. Is it something that would be too soon to even have, like at the family welcome night, where this is part of what we're thinking of do? You know, because the sooner you can engage people who have littles, right, the better. So there, you know, people that may be contemplating, oh, are we going to stay? Are we going to move? You know, it's just a consideration. The sooner we get any kind of word out.
For both, for, are you saying specifically for the ECE or for Churchill, for both? I mean?
Whatever we're comfortable with, but certainly for the littles, because I feel like people start to plan that far ahead.
I mean, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point. I think that, that, that can be something, um, where we can get drawings and some inspiration from that. And I do think it would be good for, um, our Churchill students to see this. The one thing that we don't want to do is we don't want to spring this on them and feel like they are like another program that I'm going to have to be sent to. Like I don't want it to feel like that for them. I want the kids to feel excited about, these are the opportunities we're, um, looking forward to giving you. And again, we've had CTE buses. They like, they literally have to pass here going from the bus garage to get to the high school. And we just, they're, I don't know if kids haven't been interested in taking it or why or what, but I think that making sure that they understand, like, we are going, one of the requirements of being here, and again, I use requirements with like a lowercase r, um, is that you're going to have to get some experience that you're going to carry with you for the rest of your life. Whether that experience says, I thought I wanted to work in a restaurant and then I took two Safe Serve classes and I never want to do that again. Or I thought I wanted to do this and now I'm 10 credit hours into it and that was all free. And by the way, now I can navigate a college campus. Like those two experiences are equally as valuable and they're two very different experiences.
Anything else from the board end?
A quick question. Um, we already have some planned expenditures out of the sinking fund next year, other than this, right?
Yep.
And I think we cover, we have enough to cover all of it.
We do, so that available funding does include the encumbered amounts. So it's, it's more like 5.4 or something like that, and then when you encumber it, it's 5.1, and so we're still in pretty good shape. Would you like me to encumber more by the end of the meeting?
I don't know what encumber means, so yeah.
It means spend without actually, it means, uh, like allocate.
Earmark.
Earmark.
Thank you.
So what is the timeline that we're looking at, first of all, and what are you looking for from us?
So from you all, I don't think that this is, uh, and, and President Chahorski, you could probably answer better. I don't think that this needs to be an official vote, um, until we actually get to the construction projects. Um, but I think we're looking for guidance, like is this the direction that we want to go as a district? You know, we can put up all of the things in the world, but if you say like, I've talked to, we've talked to our constituents, we've listened to our community and like, this is a terrible idea. Or like, I've been in education for this long and you guys are just going down the wrong path, then like that would be something that we would like to know tonight. Um, or, you know, kind of sooner rather than later. But as far as the timeline goes, um, TMP is going to start, would start getting the drawings, um, sooner rather than later. We're hoping that we can have them out to bid by, um, October and then really like start finalizing all of that stuff and get contracts done and like kind of have the proverbial shovels in the ground in February, so that we're ready to go.
I think we, so we, we talked a little bit about this at financing facilities, and I think this is such, um, a benefit to our community, something that we cannot, you know, I mean, there's, I don't know how you would say no to this. This is just such a logical use of this space too, right? Um, but it just, um, ensures that we capture, or, you know, it has the potential to capture some of those littles that today we may not be capturing because we don't have the space. So I think it's just such a logical thing for us to do. We've been fiscally responsible. It's, you know, I think it just makes sense.
Thank you.
I agree.
I, I agree, and it may not be necessary, but I, I think I would like the board to vote on it. I'm sort of excited to vote, vote for it, so, you know, I, I don't want to telegraph it, but my vote will.
Wait, you know, I mean, I think as a cabinet, like we're very excited for that and, you know, as an, as an administrative team and just thinking about walking the space 100 times and like thinking about what we're going to do. And, and again, I think what excites us is that like, I don't know that, I don't know how often in my career we've really talked about like putting the alternative program first and saying like, what, what is, what do we want to do with that as opposed to, let's move all of this other programming around and, oh shoot, we have to figure out what we're doing with this. And so this is like an exciting thing where we're going in and we're saying like, what do you want your space to look like? So, yeah, that's, that, the, the process and procedure is, I'm not quite there yet, President Chahorski, I need you for that.
Like, well, I do, if I heard correctly, have a motion on the table from trustee Wiki to proceed with this plan as presented by Dr. Tofelski. Is that correct, trustee Wiki?
That's correct.
And I believe we have a second from trustee Juzinski. Is there any discussion on the motion before us?
Hearing an, I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you all very much. We will get to work on this now. That's right.
They'll be leaving the meeting now.
Thank you all again. We really appreciate this.
Though I have to say, I was looking for you, to you up there jumping up and.
You know, I, the, the meeting is not over yet. The night is young.
All right, agenda item number seven this evening is communications, and I will ask Secretary Anderson to make that presentation.
Uh, we've received four communications since our last meeting. Allison Vanden Caibum, um, Zulima is the last name, Mario Pengilli, and Kimberly Peel.
Great, thank you. Agenda item eight this evening is the consent agenda. The consent agenda generally quite consists of routine matters as well as items we've covered during this meeting or another board meeting or committee meeting. All items are documented in the minutes which are published following the meeting and which they are approved. All of our committee and board meetings are open to the public and public comment is an item on each of those agendas. We invite members of the public to join our committees. Tonight's consent agenda does consist of the payment of expenses. Do we have any other additions or deletions to the consent agenda? Like, here, another consent, consent agenda is approved as presented. And to agenda item nine, matters for discussion and action, brings back to Dr. Tofelski at 9.1, the superintendent's report.
So, um, the, the first, um, action item that we have is the first reading of the revised, um, replaced or recommended policies and guidelines. And this one is the, I believe this one is the food service one, PO 8500. And there was a paragraph that was excluded from the last time we went through this. And so that paragraph has been, really it has just been struck, but we did not take any action on it. So we do have to go through first and second reading again before we vote.
Probably looks very familiar to everybody. It was up for second reading one month ago.
Yeah. Yeah, so we're going back to the first.
So nobody's crazy. We just did this for the last three meetings. I'd like to entertain a motion for 9.1.1. Trustee Van Heysma.
Be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves a first reading of the policies and administrative guidelines being revised, replaced, and/or recommended as presented.
Thinking we have a second for that motion. Trustee Wiki, is there any discussion on the motion before us? Seeing a call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. 9.1.2 is the M A S B voting delegate. Can speak to this. So every year, the Michigan Association of School Board has a delegate assembly. We are responsible for providing the name of the trustee that will represent our district at that delegation. Currently, I am planning to attend the assembly as is trustee Cook. And I don't believe anyone else has registered yet, or if anyone intends to register. I'd like to put forth the motion that Michelle Cook be our delegate at the assembly. Do we have a second to my motion? Second by trust, or I'm sorry, Vice President Alexander. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing a call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. This to agenda.
I do have one more thing under my report. Um, we talked to, no, it was not on there. We, this was a, a special item. We, uh, had a discussion as a board, um, or I, I actually asked the board after speaking with cabinet about, um, the ability to name, uh, Dr. Ioannis, the Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. Um, and the board agreed, uh, his contract will appear, um, later under Staff and Student Services, but I did want to give, um, special commendation to Dr. Ioannis to make sure that he's recognized publicly, um, as the Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. It's been awesome to work with the entire cabinet, but especially Dr. Ioannis. Um, I know when I came into this position, um, I, I wanted to make it a priority that he and I were going to work together and like it has gone faster and better and more seamless than I think either of us had possibly expected, and it's really been a treat. Um, so I was happy that the board, um, affirmed that, and I think it's a wonderful thing, um, and, and hopefully, um, hopefully he's excited for it.
Yeah, definitely. Very excited and grateful for this opportunity, and I just want to take a few moments to thank, um, everyone. Thank you, President Chahorski, uh, and our school board members for just being, um, providing me yet again with another opportunity to learn and grow in our district. And thank you to Dr. Tofelski. Uh, his energized leadership style has really invigorated all of us. And I'll tell you what, and I, and I don't want to speak for my cabinet members, but, um, he makes us feel like every, anything is possible. So we, we, he's got a lot of good ideas and we talk about a lot of things and, and there's not one thing that he hasn't said we couldn't do. So I think that does empower us as a leadership team and helps us feel like we can do anything. Um, so again, and I also want to thank my colleagues, uh, Ms. Abella and Mr. Wilensky. Uh, my first worked with them 12 years ago when I came to Royal Oak Schools, uh, as an early administrator, and they've helped me a lot throughout those 12 years. And then more specifically, they, these last three years have really helped me understand what it means to be a district-level leader. I think I've mentioned it before, uh, I fell in love with Royal Oak Schools 12 years ago, and this opportunity, uh, excites me so much because I can learn from Dr. Tofelski and his experiences and, and still support our school, our school district. Um, and I'm just excited about our future together, and, and like he said, it's been phenomenal, it's been great. It's been fast-paced. I've mentioned before that I'm, uh, physically out of shape, but I think I might be mentally out of shape, but that is accelerated here. So it's just great to have a leader that is energized and, and, um, is not afraid of taking a risk. So, yeah, we're excited about it and thank you for this opportunity, and I will definitely not let the board down in our school district. And again, thank you to Ms. Abella and Mr. Wilensky for always being so supportive and helping me understand what it means to lead our district or help lead our district. Very grateful, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Abella and this, Mr. Wilensky were so excited when we talked about doing this. It was just, it, it was wonderful. As excited as Dr. Ioannis was, I think they were even more excited. They were like, you know, kind of like proud parents or aunts and uncles or something, so, yeah. It was, uh, it, that's. So it was just, it's, it's wonderful to have a team. Like we had lunch today and I was just like, I, I, how long have I been here? This is just, it's been wild and they've been so welcoming and so wonderful, but congratulations, Dr. Ioannis, you deserve this for sure, so.
Any comments or questions from the board on that? Trustee Van Heysma.
I always have a comment. Well, I'm just so grateful that, um, Dr. Ioannis was given this title and I think he is well-deserving of it. I think I've known you the whole 12 years that you've been here, um, and I was part of the team that brought you to Royal Oak, so I'm very excited to be able to, um, say that. But just, um, I'm excited that everybody is so energized, and I think Dr. Tofelski, we saw that when we interviewed you. Your level of excitement was just like, uh, you know, it's just such a, a, a great thing. And, and to engage the team and have the team be energized even more than they were is really great, so I'm thankful for that. But congratulations, Dr. Ioannis.
Just quickly, I would second that. Congratulations to Dr. Ioannis and also, uh, it's a very good move. It's, it's a, it's a very good thing for, I think, our leadership team and, and it's really positive for those of us on the board who get to be part of what's going on. So thank you to everybody.
9.2 is Dr. Ioannis.
Thank you, President Chahorski. Now, Ms. Phillips did talk a little bit earlier about new teacher and staff orientation, but I do want to take a little bit of time here to talk about that. It's always an exciting time, uh, to welcome our new teachers and staff members to the district. And, you know, our, uh, team does a great job putting components in place so that when they're here, we begin the welcoming process. We talk a lot about Royal Oak being a community of excellence and really, um, when we first bring our staff members in, our goal is to help them understand who we are, what our values are, what we believe in as a school district, uh, and how we support our students and families. Part of what we did on that initial first day was gave our new teachers and staff members, uh, time to rotate and speak with different administrators. And really, uh, small group setting, a couple administrators, two to three new teachers at each of those tables, really getting a chance to engage with them, uh, to get a better idea of their experiences and their background, and they had a chance to ask us, uh, questions about Royal Oak, uh, about Royal Oak Schools and some of the things that we do. So I think that was a great part of that first day of the program to just get to know, um, our new teachers and, and staff members. And again, we talked about diversity, equity and inclusion and everything that we do, our understanding of the importance of welcoming all. And we really do mean all when we say that here in Royal Oak, um, so we kind of just wanted to make that was, make that something that we would take with them on that first day. You also saw earlier in the picture that Ms. Phillips had, the end of the trip, uh, on the bus.
You also saw earlier in the picture that Ms. Phillips had, the end of the trip on the bus tour that they took around Royal Oak for our new teachers and staff members, along with our, some of our curriculum team, took one of our buses and traveled around Royal Oak. And what they get a chance to see there is the wonderful community that we have, the spaces and the parks and the roads and everything that we have with our schools. We visit some touch points across the district and then they end at Ray's Ice Cream there and get a chance to have some ice cream before they come back to the building. So really, the focus of that first day is just welcoming them and helping them understand some of the components that make Royal Oak a community of excellence. We also take time during that first day to talk a little bit about some logistics, you know, technology, smart boards, laptop distribution, other things that are important for teachers, some of the Canvas learning management systems. Those are all components that we make sure we give them an understanding of on that first day. We also have wonderful sponsors, Core Bridge Financial, and then Equitable Advisors provide some wonderful sponsorship for the two-day session. Our Royal Oak Education Association had time with our new staff members on the second day, provided a wonderful lunch, and it was great to have them there. Just supporting our new teachers and just helping them understand the importance of being a part of our Royal Oak Schools Education Association and then the support that they provide them. And we also had time for Ms. Isabella and Mr. Walensky to talk to our new staff members about their departments, finance and facilities, and then of course, Staff and Student Services. So again, an opportunity really to help our new staff members get understanding, and of course, Dr. Tofelsky was there too at the beginning and is engaged in everything. And I've said it before in a meeting, I think there's more than one of him because he ends up being in multiple places, or I just see him really quickly moving around the building. So again, a great opportunity to connect with our teachers and staff members for two years. So August 13th and 14th. And then the other thing I wanted to talk a little bit about is our upcoming Welcome Back plans and activities for August. We're excited and we've worked with our Royal Oak Education Association and taken some feedback surveys to better understand the first few days back for teachers. It's important for them to be in their classrooms and have time in their building. So on August 18th, our teachers have an opportunity to work, have a workday session at their buildings. August 19th, they'll have an opportunity to have some building level professional development and a team meeting with their building principals, and then they'll have time in the afternoon to work in their classrooms as well. Before we have our big August 20th kickoff, again, we wanted to provide teachers and staff members a couple opportunities to work in their buildings and classrooms before they come for the all-district kickoff. In the afternoon of that, August 20th, we have our launch and a learning event, and we'll have more details about that. But really, that's again, another opportunity where we're trying to leverage our teacher leadership in the district to build capacity and having them present sessions that we can engage and learn with. So, and then of course, August 21st, which is the last day of that week, full day professional development opportunity at the elementary level. They're going to work on some arc with our new ELA material training. And then we're still working on some secondary plans and our special ed staff will have time with Dr. Watson as well. So a lot of action-packed days coming up and we're excited. Principals came back, I think, August 6th, and then teachers are going to become a mech soon. Of course, they've already been working in the buildings and getting things ready. So very exciting time. Elementary Curriculum Night will be September 4th, and then Middle School Curriculum Night, September 16th, and then High School, September 8th. So just an exciting time of the year, ramping up, getting ready for a school year, welcoming our new superintendent and his leadership, and then excited about getting those students and families back engaged in our schools. That's it for my updates unless there's any questions. Yes.
I'm just curious because I know we do have a couple of teacher openings that we've got interviews happening for. And because I know that, you know, we may add new teachers as the year goes on. What do we currently do to ensure that those new teachers who are coming in after we've done that initial orientation? How do we help sort of like give them that head start on what they need to know?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've talked about that the last couple of years, and we know we have highlighted some areas of improvement, and that is when we bring on new staff members. We know the initial component takes place at the building level because we're going to have more interaction with the principals and teachers there. But within our mentor-mentee program, what we've done is created another small opportunities throughout the year to reengage teachers that are new because they go right into our mentor-mentee program. And then part of what we're thinking for this year is to reincorporate some, a steady component of what we serve as information to new teachers that come on. So yeah, through our mentor-mentee program that meets very regularly throughout the year, we will begin to have an established way to welcome some of our new staff members. Unfortunately, it's going to be quick because they'll probably be in the building, working with kids before we can get them, you know, back to have some time with us. But we've been talking about hiring, like Mr. Walensky has talked about, happens throughout the school year and not just at this one time. So yeah, we're working on improving some of those things and putting those opportunities in place for new staff members. Thank you.
Mike, any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Ioannis.
Thank you.
And item 9.3 tonight is Finance, Facilities, and Bond. Turn this over to Ms. Isabella.
Good evening. I have a few quick updates for you this evening. The Royal Oak High School roof project is complete at this time. The boilers and the hot water are now operational. There's some few small things they have to do, but they are operating. The big question of the summer has been Royal Oak Middle School parking lot. So the lot that's behind the school is complete. The one that's right along Washington will be open and available on the teacher or the opening day for all staff. So that's next Wednesday. Maybe they'll scooch it out a little early, maybe, but for sure, we'll have it on Wednesday. I know that's been the big question of the summer from many different departments, even around the city, asking me because they want to make sure it's available for arts, pizza, and eats. And so yes, we should. But parking is still limited at Royal Oak Middle School. So if you're coming to opening day, get there early so that you get a spot. Carpool is always a great idea. Also, operations has been working on many small projects this summer. Those have been coming along very well. And the custodial staff working hard so that teachers can get back in their classroom. So as I've been in a few buildings, things are looking really good. So we're ready to have those teachers back next week. We talked a little bit about this last week at Finance and Facilities. The audit work, the onsite audit work is all complete. I have been in communication with our lead auditor, Joey, throughout the week, making sure he has all the things that he needs. We expect to see our draft next week. And then our auditors will be here for a presentation for you along with your approval of that audit during our September meeting. Do you have any questions for me this evening?
My usual question. What is going on with the state budget?
Funny, I forgot to say that. No state budget. So there hasn't been any movement on that budget, which is very, you know, nothing. You can ask. So of course, we passed a budget in June. We're making plans for students to be back in the building soon. What we know about the free-for-all meals for students, of course, free and reduced lunch continues the federal program as we know it. The free-for-all through Michigan is still active through September because the state budget goes October 1st to September 30th. So as we welcome students back to school, that program will still, we know for sure, will exist at least for the month of September. And hopefully, as we move from now till the end of September, we'll have some more guidance on some of those programs and how they'll proceed after that point. But I'm sorry, no state budget.
Typically, when we go through an audit, we get rated as highly as possible, and they use a really effusive term to indicate that. What is the term they use?
It's called unmodified opinion.
Can't wait.
Yes, it will be unmodified. I will, we haven't seen the whole, the whole audit yet, but it did go very well. And like I said, I say every year, it's certainly the work of every person in this district because it's every transaction every day. It's not something that me and Mrs. Boyce, our finance manager, work on for three weeks in the summer and yay, we got a gold star. This is the district policies, the state law, federal guidelines. How we operationally work is how we get to this point. It's not an accident. And so I thank everybody for all the work that goes into this every day.
I did, I did want to wonder if you could just comment a little bit. So if anybody had watched our last board meeting, right? And we saw what our potential position was going to be by the end of the year, and then through the audit and the team's aggressive work on, you know, identifying any opportunities, can you speak to where we potentially will end up? Of course, it has to be audited, but just.
Right, so.
Thank you.
Barring no other changes, we had passed in June an amended general fund budget of, I believe it was one, a structural deficit of $1.9 million. Where we ended was somewhere around a deficit of about $50,000. So we've made up a considerable amount of money. And that was due to a lot of our administrators not using their budget. One of the principals said to me, you told us we were on a beans and rice diet. So she, so they really worked hard. This was every administrator in this district bought what was needed for, through the end of the year, but didn't buy any, they didn't exhaust their entire budget. Right? So it is certainly every department. It's Dr. Ioannis's department, technology. All departments worked really hard so that this district continues to run all the program that we've become accustomed to.
And I think that speaks to the fiscal responsibility we talked about earlier that allows us the opportunity, right, to be able to do the work in this building. Thank you.
Do you want to give a reminder or do you want me to, for families to still fill out that form, no matter what happens with lunch?
You go right ahead.
Families, families, please still fill out that free and reduced lunch form. It's important to us for a lot of other funding things. So no matter where that program goes, of course, we are hoping that free-for-all lunch stays. It still helps us with a lot of other times that we use that as an indicator for funding. And so it's still important that that's filled out, even if lunch remains free.
It does important, just to piggyback on trustee Jocinski. Our early child, our before care and after care, we rely on that form for reduced rates on that, activity fees. There are all kinds of things. And again, there is a certain section of our funding from the state, 31A funding, that does come from free and reduced lunch participation, no matter what the budget says.
Right, and I have seen that on the district Facebook page. All principals included it in their newsletters. So they, we should be able to find that link pretty easily.
Yeah, it was included in the annual registration, and they were also indicated that it's not being mailed out to families. So it's, you know, it's even extra important that they do that. Hopefully, people saw that during the registration.
If any family does need a paper application, those are all available at each individual school. They just need to ask for one, and we can make that available.
A rate of return for the physical paper copies was extremely, extremely low. Like, I don't know that we were.
Less than a dozen?
Yeah. It's a, yeah, it was a stamp 57 cents now, I think. So we have 4,800 students. We can do the math. It's a lot. Do you want me to do it for you?
So yes, thank you for the reminder. And that also helps with the State of Michigan program because anything that goes to the federal government helps preserve those funds for the state government to continue to provide that program.
Any other questions? No. Well, Lani Grace, I feel like I've been ignoring you. Do you guys have any questions about anything from your last talking to now? You don't have to have questions. Excellent. Going to 9.4, Staff and Student Services. Turn this over to Mr. Walensky.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chorworski. I have two items for your approval. Before I talk about them, I will give you an enrollment update. Absent a state aid budget, what we do know is that funding will still be tied to enrollment. So it's significant. It's a significant predictor of our financial standing. In the last month, we have enrolled 17 additional children for kindergarten, which brings the total kindergarten enrollment to 350 children. And our developmental kindergarten enrollment reminds it, remains at 82. So 432 children enrolled, and I'll put this in my weekly update as well. So 432, last fall, we had 456. So we're down a little bit. We're down 24 children currently between kindergarten and developmental kindergarten. However, our schools of choice enrollment in grades K through, DK through eight is up significantly, at least the enrollment. And hopefully, these people follow through and report on the first day of school. We have 135 enrolled in schools of choice in DK through eight. Last fall, we had 61. So we're up 74 children in those grade levels. And we had a smaller-than-usual graduation class this past fall. My prediction is that our enrollment's going to be up, which will significantly help our funding from the state, regardless of the state aid budget. Do you have any questions about that? Okay, I also have two items on tonight's agenda for your approval. And, you know, the monthly personnel changes, item 9.4.1, which I'll just summarize for you. We have some recommendations for hire, seven. Three of those are for paraeducators. That's the new title we use through negotiations for what we previously called paraprofessionals. So three paraeducators, which we never seem to have enough of. Two elementary grade-level teachers, one benefits coordinator here at the board office, one speech and language pathologist. Also listed on the report are four resignations and one retirement notification, which is actually a resignation as well, from Rob Dietiker, supervisor of secondary special education. Rob has worked in Royal Oak for 29 years, but he had years on the west side of the state prior to coming here. So he is officially retiring August 31st, and we wish Rob the best. We also have one request for a leave of absence and one return from a leave of absence. And the best part of the report is we included a title change, a request to change Dr. Ioannis's title and role from executive director to Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, which, which sounds great. And I, speaking for Kathy and I, we're just so happy about, and happy for Joe, and think it's the right thing to do. That is item 9.4.1.
I have a question. How many positions do we still need filled before the beginning of the school year? Is there anything open currently?
Yeah, we do have a teaching position at Oak Ridge Elementary that we need to fill. We're going to need to fill a social work position. We're wrapping up interviews for Rob Dietiker's position, the administrative position, but we're doing, we're doing pretty good. We do have the special ed position at Oak Ridge that we need to, if not fill, find a long-term substitute to start the year, somebody qualified to teach that class.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Do we still have the two kindergarten teacher positions at Adams as well?
I'm chuckling because, yes, we do. But Tim Boyer has been texting me. He just, they finished interviews and I have two people I have to call in the morning, yes, to offer the positions to. So we're in good shape there.
Excellent, thank you.
Mike, with that, do we have a motion for 9.4.1? Trustee Jocinski.
Resolved, the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the regular personnel changes as presented in the board packet.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Van Heesma, any discussion on the motion? See now, a call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, I also have 9.4.2 on the agenda is a request to approve the employee contracts for our 12 unclassified employees for the next two years. So the '25, '26 school year and the '26, '27 school year. As you know, we finalized and approved all four of our collective bargaining unit contracts in June, which I feel good about. These are the people that don't belong to one of those collective bargaining units. So we call them unclassified. There are 12 employees whose contracts, I believe that was shared with you in Finance and Facilities, two-year contract for those employees. And that is item 9.4.2.
Trustee Wiki. Are you making, excellent. Go ahead, sir. Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the unclassified employee contracts as attached for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027. Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Van Heesma, any discussion on this motion? See now, a call for the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Walensky. Bring this to item 10 tonight, which is Public. Bring this to item 10 tonight, which is public comment, same rules as the first public comment. Anybody wish to speak from the audience? Seeing none, we'll continue on to item 11, which is board comments and liaison reports. Actually, we'll start with trustee Jocinski with the update on policy committee.
We readjusted some of our committees, and President Chorworski, Michelle, trustee Cook, and I serve on our policy committee. It's always a really, really great opportunity for us to really talk in depth about some of the things that guide us. The majority of the policies that we review are just like some minor language changes, really, from our lawyers, you know, typos that they've caught or things that need to be revisited. And then every once in a while, we are really able to get into some really wonderful conversations about the kind of district we want to be. The three policies that we've discussed recently that I did just kind of, you know, want to bring attention to that we're going to talk about at upcoming meetings. There were some minor adjustments to some graduation requirements and just making sure that all of our, that all of our policies align with state expectations and things like that. There was some language approvals dictating what kinds of gifts or favors school employees, including us, could, sorry? Could receive, right, that we have to say no thank you to anything that would sway our decisions or influence any decisions that we make in any way. And then the policy that we've spent the majority of our time speaking about, that's still under a lot of consideration and will continue to be for this coming school year, is our policies regarding artificial intelligence. It's a really challenging conversation right now as it faces education. We know that this is something that's coming that we can't ignore. We want to be responsible in our use of technology, and we also want to be preparing our students to live in a world where this is, you know, going to be a constant thing. We want to make sure that our policies dictate both the academic use of this by our staff and our students. And so we're working really closely with Oakland schools to make sure that those policies all follow, you know, best practices and what kind of guidance we're getting from across the county. And most importantly, that we're going to kind of agree to use an approved set of list that other districts have workshopped and vetted to make sure that we're not, you know, nobody's going it alone on this kind of a conversation, that we're really looking out for each other and making sure that everything that we're deciding is skill-based and aligns with our digital literacy goals, but is also making sure that we're not encouraging academic dishonesty in any kind of way. So it can be a scary world out there with technology, but we want to make sure that we're equipping both our staff and students to meet that challenge head-on.
Did I miss anything? Real quick, sorry trustee, President Chorworski. Dr. Ioannis sent out an AI guidance document to our staff this morning.
Oh, excellent.
It was absolutely phenomenal, like so well thought out. It was thorough. It was amazing. So I'll include that in my updates as well, but that's something that our staff has access to, and I think it's amazing. Sorry, President Chorworski. I apologize.
Thank you, trustee Jocinski. Do we have any questions for her? Excellent. Secretary Anderson, did communications meet?
We met June 10th. I do have a little recap of that, but many of the things that we talked about have already happened.
I can figure it. But go ahead.
Okay. So remember, this was June 10th. We discussed a possible new format for the district dispatch. A communication survey is being planned for the fall. The district received several awards from the National School Public Relations Association. And then Jarrett Grissimer shared that the Insights into Learning video series is done for the year, but I'm sure we'll be starting a new one. He would be reshooting the drone footage for all the websites this summer, and he's been working on a new video for the website, and there's a new co-op student this fall. Royal Oak High School teacher Mike Conrad shared that he would be working with PBS this summer on teaching, teaching teachers how to podcast. And we did review a lot of social media stats, and all of them have increased. And then this doesn't, isn't part of the committee thing, but would you be able to share that, Churchill reimagining those slides with us?
The slides, for sure.
Yeah, thank you.
So any questions? No? All right. I will talk about the city school liaison meeting that was held on July 16th. It looked like a really short agenda, and it really turned out not to be a short agenda. But it was a really great opportunity for Superintendent Fitzpatrick to be able to tie up a lot of things that she had started working on and say some final farewells to that committee. And it turned things over to Dr. Tofelski. We talked about the Safe Routes to School program that was initiative that was started by Superintendent Fitzpatrick and Commissioner Chezum of the Royal Oak City Commission. She has two OU students that she's working with. There's hopes that she'll be able to include some of our students in some of the research and engagements around the program. The street lighting at Austin and Washington, which is going to make Ram's very excited. At the meeting, which was about four weeks ago, it was supposed to be completed in four to six weeks, so I am going to assume within the next two weeks, all that work will be completed. It is work being done by DTE, so maybe that won't happen. The, it's going to be a parking change on Marywood during drop-off, actually during all of the school hours, there's going to be no parking on the west side of the street there. The city has agreed to allow a robotics team to use the space we're using in the parking structure for another year. They did realize there was a substantial cost to the city. The robots use a lot of electricity, and it's costing the city additional $500 a month since the robotics team has moved in. They have agreed to split that bill with the district, so that's awesome. And the pool update, they're waiting for confirmation from the YMCA who wants to take over that program. They're hoping Open Swim will be open again by sometime in the fall, and they did mention there will be a $7 fee for Open Swim. That's all I have today. Missed anything? No? Excellent. Does anybody have any other updates or reports? Or comments?
I always have comments. So Commissioner Chezum actually reached out to engage PTA as well in the Safe Routes to School, so I've passed that information on to the PTA council president because Commissioner would like to come to one of the council meetings. So here at first, the Royal Oak Youth Assistance Bowl-a-thon that has existed for the past few years is coming back this year. Just solidified a date today, so for those with a competitive spirit, it'll be back in November. So just solidify the date today. Or you just want to show up. You don't have to bowl. I don't, I go, but I don't bowl. Oh, is, well, I haven't told the board yet, so I can't. It's going to be on a Sunday. It's in November, November 16th, I think, is the second Sunday? Sunday? And, and the Lions game, because I checked the Lions' schedule, the Lions' game is at 8:20 that day, so it will not interfere. It'll be at 1 o'clock on a Sunday. Had to make sure we didn't have any conflicts. So I just wanted to share that. We're very excited to bring that back. And I think it's important for us, you know, for people to realize what Royal Oak Youth Assistance does, and they're a big part of this community. So we're very excited to bring that back this year. And I just wanted to give a big welcome back. I know the staff are back next week, so I just wanted to give a huge welcome back to all of them. Very excited for the start of another school year. I just talked to my daughter over the weekend, who started her first week of school last week, and the excitement from her, and I know our teachers are the same, it's just always so, the start of the year is always so exciting. So I'm just really glad to have them back, and I want to welcome our families and our students back as well and hope for the best in this coming school year. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments? Leilani?
So these are about the DP program. Most of these questions will be about that. So we did hear that those will be trying to be cut or readjusted in some sense?
All programming is being evaluated.
Yeah, okay. And so we just want to ask, what were the plans for that exactly? What will be happening to that program, DP, as talked about on the college meeting, the coffee meeting?
At the coffee meeting, yeah. So specifically at the coffee meeting, we talked about, seriously, evaluating the program to see if it is something that is undercommunicated, so students are not engaging in that program for a reason, and figuring out maybe why students aren't engaging in that program. The most important thing to me, and I stress this at the coffee meeting, was that when we talk about, whether it's the DP program, which is part of the IB, or AP, which is part of the College Board, the idea that we are going to deliver college readiness standards to our students at Royal, at Royal Oak High School and Royal Oak Middle School frankly will not change. The vehicle with which we do that is being evaluated, and that may change. But year in and year out, we go from, you know, McGraw-Hill to Houghton-Mifflin. We are changing the materials that we are using and the primary resources that we are using to deliver our common core state standards, but the non-negotiable is that those common core state standards are delivered. And so that is one of the things that I did speak with the, the community members at coffee with the superintendent at the office coffee shop about was looking at why we have students choosing not to take the DP program. Is it simply because theory of knowledge is zero hour, and if you can't go through the full DP because you have other commitments, you just don't want to take any of the DP classes? Is it perceived as harder? Is it perceived as more rigorous, less rigorous? Is there a perception that you can't get the same level of college credit? Or, you know, it's just, whatever the reason is, we would like to figure out why. One of the things that I think we are mindful of as an administration and as a board is not, like, leaving kids hanging, for lack of a better term. So there would not just be an off-ramp where, like, we are ending AP after January and, like, good luck taking your, like, that would not, or we are ending DP, and if you started it, sorry. None of those conversations are on the table. But I think that when we look at the, the student schedules and we, when we look at the number of classes with 10 or fewer students at the high school, nine out of 12 of those classes are DP classes. And so why do we have such low numbers in those DP classes? And would those students, would students in other classes be a better fit for that? And so we talked, we've talked a lot about that. That was one of the things that we talked about at Administrative Council is, as we look at this, I think that there are some reports that we can use from the PSAT, which as you know, you take in eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. Can we take some of those reports from the PSAT and build a profile of a student and say to the parents and the student, you are a DP student, you are an AP student. You may not have known that, but you are going in, and here are the supports that we're going to offer you, but you're going to be in one of these college readiness classes. And so that is the, that's where we're at right now. We have not made a decision to cut DP, though. If that, if that came through in coffee with the superintendent, that was certainly not my message. I did read the little blurb that Sammy sent out, and I thought that she did capture that, you know, our programs are being evaluated, and we're going to look at the best way to offer college readiness, college readiness curriculum to our students regardless of what the title is. So, but that is, you can write that part down, Leilani. Dr. Tofelski said, "College readiness for all." That's important to all of us, I think. And even if you don't want to go to college, a college readiness standard says you can read and write fluently, and you can do fundamental math, and you can read for information, and you have critical thinking skills. And so I think it's important for all of our students, 612, to really have access to those college readiness skills to make sure that they are prepared for whatever life, wherever life takes them after high school.
So if DP were to be, like, phased out, like, in later years after the, like, like, two-year programs are done, would the reform for AP be changed then? Because DP offers, like, world growth and, like, oral, like, assessments, would that be then added to AP, or would they be added to another type of class?
Yeah, so I don't think that we could phase out DP or AP without growing the other relatively significantly. And so when you look at advanced placement, their answer to some of the international baccalaureate curriculum was AP capstone and AP research, or, excuse me, AP research and AP seminar are the two classes, and so we would have to consider programming like that. There's ways that you can onboard a little bit earlier. I know that we have the NYPD in, in our IB program here, but when you look at some of the ninth-grade classes that our students could access in, from an AP standpoint, that would be something that we would have to bring on to make sure that students had early access to a rigorous curriculum even when they were in ninth grade. So you would look at a profile of a student and say, you know, you may not think that you're an AP student, but have you ever considered one of the AP visual arts classes or one of the, you know, a DP ELA class? So there are some things that both programs do very well. I think the theory of knowledge is a wonderful class. I also think that AP Lang is perhaps the best class that is offered in any high school anywhere. And so I think that there's, there's space for one of those programs. I'm not sure, when we look at numbers, like, I don't know that there's space for both of them, so.
So then would that be on the student board to talk to AP and DP kids and get back to you on that?
It would be wonderful if you got feedback from your friends.
Okay, so we can work on that. Thank you. That was a question that I did want to ask, but I was in Texas during the coffee meeting, and I was like, I don't know how to get there really quick. And then what will happening for those students that were, like, be dead set on, like, doing a boatload of AP classes or DP classes if either one of those gets, like, reevaluated? Would there be other options for them? Like, I assume that there would be, but, like, do you have any currently in mind?
Yeah, so if it were DP that were phased out, then we would certainly have to increase the number of seats that we have with the International Academy. And there are other ways that we could do that, both through the Bloomfield campus, and then also, I know Troy has something that may be a little bit more accessible to our students and our families. So, you know, we want everybody to have an option and everybody to have access to the, to the program that they want. But when we start looking at what our capacity is within our school, we're going to have to reach out to our educational partners for all of those things, so.
Okay. And then one last question from me. Since, if either one of those gets phased out, do we think that would mess up with, like, school of choice registration because other schools might still be able to offer other things that we don't? Do we think that would affect the numbers of students coming to our school specifically?
I don't. So we don't take a significant number of students, and Mr. Wolinski might be able to tell us how many we take in sixth grade, but sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we take very few students. 912, we take zero students. We know that. And we are one of the few programs, again, so we take a very limited number of students. And then when we look at how many other districts offer IB, really, it's Troy, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody else. And every other Oakland County district in the surrounding area uses the International Academy. So I don't view DP as something that is bringing students in because we get so few students in that DP, in that area where they would say, like, I'm coming just for the NYPD. We get such a small number of students that, like, we're not competing with anybody else. Like, it's not like they could go to Berkeley and get that. And so I think that, again, it's important for us, when we're looking at attracting students to this district that want to access the college readiness curriculum, it's what is my four-year plan or what is my five-year plan to make sure that I can do that? And when you look at the strengths and weaknesses of both programs, I was meeting with a parent who said, my daughter didn't get into, and I'll call it, for lack of a better term, Math 7++ as a sixth grader. And so she was unable to get through the entire DP math program. And that's really hard for me as a superintendent to hear, that somebody who is a 10- or 11-year-old is making a choice that is then going to affect them as a 17- or 18-year-old. And so those are some of the structural programs where we look at and we say, well, in the AP world, you can still get through Calc BC even if you weren't one of those early adopters of seventh-grade algebra. You can, there are still ways to get all the way through and exhaust that AP curriculum. And so these are all wonderful questions. I don't know if I was more detailed than I was supposed to be, but I, but I think that, like, we need to, we need to start having this honest conversation. And Leilani, like, the detail of those questions was unbelievable and the thoughtfulness, and so hit me with them again.
Now that I read that.
We can keep going.
I have one, one last question. So the courses that are offered for DP, like DP Music Film, will that be, like, phased into another class? I know that not a lot of people sign up for that, and that hasn't been run in years, but would that still be offered in another forum just in case, like, it does get signed up for?
Yeah, I mean, again, when we talk about rigor for all kids, I think that we have to find a way to bring rigor to those programs. The, kind of the easiest one that I use, I think that it's really important to have a rigorous physical education class as opposed to just, like, a life sports or a, you know, a team sports class. I think that when you look at strength training and conditioning for our students who are athletes and who want to kind of major in athletics in the next step in their career, we have to have something for them. I think that students who are engaged in the fine arts and engaged in the performing arts need to have something. So whether it is a DP-specific class or, again, whether we So whether it is a DP specific class or again, whether we are delivering those rigorous standards to them through an advanced drama or, you know, some kind of advanced visual or performing arts, I think that, that again is important. And when you look, I was a CTE teacher and so I had Programming 1, Programming 2, Programming 3 and Programming 4, all in the same class. I had 29 kids in like four different sections in a single hour. And so we're used to that in the elective space. And so I think that in some of those elective spaces, that might be what it is. And, you know, in woodshop, you might have the intro to woodworking and you might have advanced cabinet making. And those kids are working on different things. And so I think we can do that in the visual and fine art space as well.
Okay, since I asked all these questions, I forgot to preface that we did, all the student board members did meet earlier this morning.
That's great.
That's why I do have all these questions.
It's awesome.
And I'm not just like sitting there just stewing, just like with all these questions just ready to ask.
I, listen, I love it. I think it's wonderful. I think this is what the, the purpose of a student board is, is to ask these questions like, you know, and I think it's important for me as a superintendent to be accountable and to be able to answer them and to be able to talk about some of the meetings and thoughts that we're having. We might not always agree on everything, but I think it's important for, you know, me to be able to stand at the coffee shop and get a question and answer a question honestly. And I, I said at the coffee shop, as long as we're having a conversation in good faith with each other, I'm, I'm always happy to have those open and honest conversations.
I will totally see what I can do about getting DP and AP. See if we can, I can get their voices and then maybe even see if we can get them in like a lunch together.
That'd be great, yeah.
See if I can get that to happen within the school year. Those are all of my questions.
And so Leilani, just so you know, and Grace, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but I am, Ms. Murphy is working with Mr. Loomis to get me into the high school once a month to meet with different groups of students. And I would like to do it during your advisory period so that it's equitable because I know you all are busy and initially it was like a three o'clock to four o'clock meeting. Like I'm still here, that doesn't matter to me, but if you have something, that's going to eliminate you. So I'd like to steal you for a little bit from advisory once a month.
I will have to figure that out. I am in a college program, I do not have an advisory.
It's a good thing I see you monthly for a couple of hours.
Yeah, so then I will talk about and see what we can figure out with that to see if we can get like an extra meeting to, for people who also have that.
Sure.
Now to Gray.
I just have one question. The DP program pretty much has a center around non-standard based testing to include like oral presentations and IAs, while AP is more focused on standard based testing and you learn all year and do one big test at the end. If one phases out, will the other program kind of grow and evolve to include the other type of testing?
So that's a great question and I do think that that is pretty traditional in an AP class. But again, when you talk about AP research and AP seminar, those are built around principles of the DP program and the IB program. And so in AP seminar, the students actually have to complete a performance assessment that is scored by the teacher, videotaped and then back validated by the AP, by an AP reader. And so there are some programs that are shifting to, some of the AP classes that are shifting to more of that DP model. And really, I think more than that final assessment is what is our, what do our assessments look like during the school year? And how are we assessing our kids? Are we just banking on nine months and then you take this one test? Or do students have the opportunity to demonstrate their learning in different ways throughout the school year? So less the, the final summit of assessment or the performance assessments or the benchmark assessments and more, what are the students telling you on a day-to-day basis? And how are you responding in your instruction to those students? I think is really important. And again, so like fundamentally, yeah, AP Calc AB and AP Calc BC are going to look the way that they've looked for a long time. But there are other opportunities in AP to have more of a performance-based assessment and I think it's incumbent on the teacher, no matter whether it's, no matter the, the, the vehicle that we are using to deliver the college readiness programs, to make sure that they are responsive to the students within the class. So if the students are telling them that we're learning, we can keep moving. If the students are saying like, I did not get that, then I as a teacher have to be responsive and have to, you know, teaching should be a contingent practice. My teaching should be contingent on the student learning within the class.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Grace. That was a great question too, you guys crushed it.
I love the questions. Like anything else tonight? Like seeing none, we are adjourned at 8:22.